Hey, 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 hey. How you doing? How you doing? We are here in the building for another great day, another great episode of Podcast in the City. And I guess we was, we were off like a week or two, what?
Yes, we've been off a week. We didn't, just a week. I think it was just a week. We didn't have, we didn't come on last weekend.
Right, we didn't come on last weekend. So what did, what did you do last weekend? What did you do that was interesting, babe, last weekend?
Ooh, what did we do last weekend? I can't even think. What was this? What did we do last weekend?
We did a lot. We did a couple of things last weekend, right? You're like, I know. See, when you get this age, you find, you find out that you forget things real quick. You forget a lot of things real, real quick.
Wow, what did we do last weekend? That's sad that I can't even remember everything we did last weekend. Give me a little hint.
Well, we gonna figure out what we gonna do November the 4th. That's what we gonna do. We gonna think about November the 4th. Today, look, if you're looking at us right now, I say this all the time. I don't know if you know or not. I don't know if you know about God, but I'm gonna mention his name. Any chance I get when you see me on some type of broadcast, podcast, anything, you gonna hear me mention God. If you don't like God, hey, I don't know what to tell you, but you gonna find out. At the end of the day, you gonna find out. If you're watching this podcast today, you are blessed because you woke up due to the man above. Thank God. You gotta thank God. You gotta thank God. But today, we have a special guest and man, listen, when her husband sent me the information, her bio, her, her manuscript, her, her heavenly glorious of so many things that she's done. I don't even, I'm gonna let them tell it, but today's guest is a very special guest and she's gonna tell you why you need to tune into her and what she's doing and how many years she's been doing it and all the great benefits that you'll love to enjoy when you hear about this woman. Today's guest is none other than Marcia A. Futel. How you doing, Ms. Futel?
I'm doing great. Thank you. That's, that was a heck of an introduction. Thank you. Thank you so much. That's so gracious of you.
You, you definitely have to, um, definitely give you a standing ovation when it comes to that because man, oh man, let me tell you. Your, um, your bios, your bio is like full of so many things. I can't even tell you how thick. And I was just, this morning I said, babe, I said, read this. I said, look at how much stuff. She must, I mean, like you must, you was born to do this. That's what I feel like. You were born to do this because you have so many things on your resume. So give, give the public a few, give them whatever you wanna give them.
Okay, alright. I don't even remember what all I said, but, uh, so about me, I grew up in Chicago. So I'm a product of Chicago Public Schools.
Okay.
And, um, grew up there, uh, went to, uh, the University of Illinois where I got my degree in, uh, computer science. Uh, met my husband there. Uh, we weren't married of course then, but met him there and, uh, followed him here to Cincinnati 'cause he came out the year before me. So I started in the information technology, uh, field as a young person. Worked 23 years in corporate America. It really shaped, uh, a lot of the skills I have, the leadership I learned, some of the bruises I took. All of that, uh, were, um, things that, that happened that shaped who I am. 23 years there, um, came out of there, worked in the faith-based arena for a while and then, uh, 20, last 20 years with my husband Chuck. So we are in the financial services business where we help families build generational wealth and help them meet their goals and dreams. And, and so you said something a minute ago, say you were born to do this. So my mother, she's my shero. She was my forever shero. She was a teacher and she had a teacher's heart and a teacher's anointing and a teacher, teacher's passion. And I too carry that same mantle that she has. Uh, I love to teach. I never went to school. Notice I got a degree in computer science. I didn't get one in education. But I naturally teach.
Right.
You know, so I've taught, um, I taught preschoolers in Bible school, two hours a Saturday with little people and it was so much fun.
Wow.
Um, I've tutored kids. Um, now with our business, I teach adults to, uh, they have a class they have to, uh, complete uh, because of the state's mandate. So I teach, uh, life insurance for them to pass their test. So I naturally am a teacher and so I've been an education advocate for over 30 years. Our children are Cincinnati Public School graduates from three different high schools. They all have degrees. They have successful careers. And so I carry my mom's passion about high academic achievement for our children. You know, she passed that down to me. She never let me slack. She never let me give up. She said, you don't let anybody stop you from getting your education. So, um, that's kind of the top line. I'm involved with a lot of education advocacy groups and organizations. Um, I sit right now on the board of the Cincinnati Preschool Promise where we, uh, provide high quality education, uh, preschool education for families who may not be able to afford it. So we do that.
That's throughout the county.
And that's, yeah, that's, no, it's Cincinnati Public.
Cincinnati, Cincinnati Schools.
Yeah, because the taxpayer in the Cincinnati Public School District paid for that. So it's taxpayer funded.
Right.
And that's exciting because that demonstrated, um, it demonstrated the commitment of the community to, to our little ones. So, so that's, that's, uh, exciting. Um, I sat on the board, uh, Parents for Public Schools for many years here locally and nationally, and I was actually a parent trainer. I taught parents how to advocate for their kids.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, and other education committees and stuff, but most importantly, I have been involved with Cincinnati Public School District for over 30 years in terms of committee work, strategic planning, um, budgets, um, developing their engagement policy around local school decision-making committees. So I've done those things, you know, while our kids were in school as well as after they left.
Right, right. That's a lot. That is, I have to say, that is definitely a lot. What do you guys say, babe?
Um, I just wanna read some comments. If someone on here, LaShawn Spears, she said, that's my girl. She's an awesome person and a very patient person as well. She was like, I was one of her students.
Oh, wow.
You remember, you remember LaShawn? You remember her?
What's her name?
LaShawn Spears.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I do.
She said, oh yeah, she was a bad girl. Oh Lord, oh LaShawn, what did you do?
Yeah, but you know, she's an awesome person too and, and I applaud her because she's very tenacious. As long as people want to get it, I'm gonna labor with them until they get it. So, yes.
Now, she was a student of what?
She was a student in my, um, life insurance class.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I seen something on your resume that says something about nonprofit. I don't know what that was, but that's, that's, that's an area that me and my wife are, um, gonna go into shortly. And I mean, like, it's a goal that we definitely gonna hit, but we just, and you know what was crazy? Yesterday we were somewhere and they was having like this, um, class, but we had something to do instead. And it was like, right then and there was like, what she said, the day she said it. That was something that God was like sent you out and we had to make a choice and we didn't make that choice. We didn't do it, but it's gonna come back around. How you feel about the nonprofit?
You know, I, I came out of those 23 years of corporate and, and that's a whole different labor, a whole different environment. You have to remember corporate America, I was a black woman in a technical field. So I had to be tough. I had to be a little, little edgy sometime and all that. So when I came out of that environment, I actually worked at the church, which was the first entry into nonprofit. The pace was slower.
Right.
And all of that, and I learned compassion.
Okay, yeah.
I learned compassion. I also learned too that people serve and serve and serve in that space and they don't make a lot of money.
Right.
So whatever nonprofit thing you chase after, you have to understand it has to be a labor of love.
Right.
You know, so it has to be a labor of love. And so then with Parents for Public Schools, which was another nonprofit, I spent some time, uh, we were in between executive directors. I actually ran the agency here for a little while. And I'm like, ooh, Lord have mercy. There's a whole lot here, you know? You trying to make sure money's coming in. You gotta make sure programs are working. You know, you're kind of doing it and you don't have a lot of staff.
Right.
Cause you don't have ways to have a lot of money. So you, you have to get really good at influencing people to volunteer their time and their efforts. So it's, 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 uh, it's a whole different kind of bit that you have to have versus having a for-profit business and stuff. So I, I had to learn, it really sharpened my influence skills 'cause you had to sell, come here and serve.
It's hard for people to, you know, do for free or do for, you know, others without getting something in return. So.
Yes, right. And, no, I was gonna say, then I had the, um, it's just how God works. So I went through this space where, um, I had run for the school board once before and I said, I'm not doing that anymore. So, cause it was just, it's hard. And there was a, a program that was started called School Board School. And the young lady that started this, she came, she said, why don't you come? Cause you know, not only do you learn about being on school boards, you can learn, sharpen your tools around advocacy, education advocacy. And first class happened. I'm like, no, cause I'm still bruised. I don't wanna deal with y'all right now. But then the next year, class two, I did join. This was in 2019 and it was a six-month program. It was very intense. I learned a lot of things, but what, and it was free. She had funding to pay for the people coming through, but the giveback was you had to have an impact statement. What are you gonna do with all the stuff that you learned? And that's something nonprofits do. You're like, we gonna pour all this stuff in you, but you gotta, you know, you gotta serve. You gotta talk about what you're gonna do. So I ended up starting a nonprofit called Connecting for Impact 'cause it married three of my passions, uh, civic engagement, you know, the whole voting thing, uh, high-quality education and entrepreneurship. And so I started, then COVID happened.
Yeah, it came.
Yeah, so not much movement on it at that point, 'cause you know, we weren't outdoors. You couldn't really do anything. And trying to get a nonprofit up and running again, that's some of the, it's not too much different than starting a for-profit business, but you got to be able to sell your vision to people who can help fund you. So, uh, so that was a challenge. But we did get some funding from the United Way. They had a program that I was able to tap into called Black Empowerment Works and they weren't funding organizations at the time. They were funding concepts. How is your concept gonna help the black community?
Right.
And my concept was, we're gonna teach them that their vote does matter. And that's where I started.
Right. What, what, you had a question?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, as far as, to piggyback what you were saying, as far as in the nonprofit and what y'all were saying, like, it's, you know, because you're not getting paid for it. I just, like, I was just telling, I was telling him, when we do start this nonprofit, we know we're not gonna get paid for it. Like you said, it gotta come out of love. It gotta come from the heart. And I just feel like God gonna pay us in just love and reward. Sometimes you gotta save the treasures for heaven.
Well, yeah, and, but there are ways to get that. And I'm, I'm gonna kind of twist it a little bit on that piece because I had some coaching. I believe in coaches. I have coaches in just about every area of my life. And this one lady, she said, look, you need to, uh, she said, you need to pay yourself. I'm like, we ain't got a lot of money here. I'm gonna pay myself. She said, I don't care what it is, just pay yourself because at some point you're going to turn your non, if you grow your nonprofit in the right kind of way, then you'll have staff and then you can step away and it'll just run.
Yeah.
And I was like, oh, she said, but if you don't start paying yourself, then you won't really have the impetus to pay somebody else, you know? And you gotta, you gotta be able to run it like a business.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there are people who are nonprofits and they take a salary maybe and, and, 'cause it's your time. Your time is worth something. Yeah, but you know, it depends on how you, how you start out and how much you have when you start.
Right. And I just think all that'll come later because I think like God said, take care of my people. I take care of you. So I think all of that will come. It, it'll come, but if you looking for it.
Yeah, if you getting in it for the money, that's the wrong.
Yeah, it gotta be something from the heart. I truly believe from the heart because somebody, God reads our heart and he, we, he, we grow from our heart. And I think that's, that's, so I think we'll tell you like y'all later off camera what we gonna start.
We definitely gonna look for, um, different outlets and a lot of learning as far as this goes, as far as the nonprofit. Cause this is, that's an area that I was never familiar with. I just thought it was like, you know, just, you're just doing free stuff. That's all I thought. You never reap any benefits. I just thought it was like, you know, you're just trying to help, you know, be a good Samaritan. But I did, um, on what you said, like, I, I, I did, um, uh, a, um, program with mortar. You, you familiar with mortar?
Yeah.
So they, they, that's one of the places that taught me that you do have to pay yourself. And I was like, I'm scared to pay myself. I don't wanna get used to paying myself and I start spending too much money. So it's, it, but once they laid out and the foundation of, you know, the, um, benefits of doing that, like you said, it, it programs in your mouth. Okay, you, you, once you, once you're able to step back and you gain some employees and it starts like funding like that, you can actually know that, okay, it's easy to pay like that. So, yeah, so, um, that's great. So we are here today though, to talk about something that you're doing for November the 4th.
Yes, sir.
And what exactly is that?
So I am a candidate for Cincinnati Public School Board of Education. I am running for one seat on that board. There are, uh, four seats open for election this year, uh, in November, uh, five candidates. So, uh, four of us will be elected. And I always say, I only need one seat. So, but that's, that's, uh, that's my goal is to, um, to win a seat on that board. And I'm out here now campaigning to earn the confidence and the votes of the people who live in the Cincinnati Public School District. So that's what I'm doing right now.
Yes. So so far, how's it been going for you?
It's been going pretty well. Um, I, like I said, I ran before this time and, and you talk about God, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna join you in that conversation. So I ran in 2017 and after that, and that had been the second time I ran actually, and I ran in 2017. That was eight years ago. And I said, you know what? Maybe I'm not supposed to do this. Let me, let me just kind of step back and see what God is saying to me. And I had, one of my coaches told me, she said, sometimes Marcia, you can make a bigger difference if you're not in the seat. And so, and I kind of saw, you know, there's things I could say as a citizen that I probably couldn't say as a board member.
Right.
And so she said, so be bold, you know, stay in the game. And I had no intentions of backing off. So like other people who sometimes run and don't win, they kind of go in the background and you never hear from them much again. Not me. I stayed in the fight, you know, I was at the board meetings. I'm listening to what's going on. I'm encouraging and teaching and training parents and all of that. And so, uh, up until this year, again, I had no plans. And, um, I had taken some time away this summer with my, uh, grandchildren. My sister and I got together and we had all our grandchildren at our house. And before I left, I'm looking at the situation that's going on in the district and I'm going like, man, this ain't, this is a hot mess. You know, but it's like, oh, I don't know. I, I, you know, we gonna look, maybe these folks can get it straightened out. When I got back, I heard God say, you need to go to the board of election and pull your petition. I'm like, really? I should?
Right.
So the bottom line is I was compelled to, to run.
Yes.
And, and so I didn't start until, uh, our petitions to be on the ballot were due August 6th. And I didn't even pull the petition packet until July 19th.
Right.
So I had like just that little short period of time to get 300 good signatures in order to be on the ballot. And so I'm, I'm doing the, I'm doing the Gideon thing like, okay, Lord, I got this. You gonna give me 300 signatures? I ain't got a lot of time. And I was just amazed at how many people said, oh, let me help you. I'll help you. I'll get them and float in. So we ended up collecting in 10 days, 'cause I turned it in earlier than the 6th.
Were you turning it in earlier?
I turned it in, I turned it in on July the 28th. We had collected 479 signatures total.
Right.
And so I'm not taking no chances, 'cause if you turn them in and you're short, you gotta start all over.
I heard about, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I had me and my, one of my daughters and a couple of us, we at the board elections checking the signatures. We checked 379.
And making sure they was valid, valid signatures.
Mm-hmm. So I turned it in and made it. I said, oh, thank you, Jesus. So, so for me, um, I needed to know that's what I was supposed to do 'cause this is major, this is a major step out for me. I am very passionate and, and adamant about children and their education, but as a personality, I'm an introvert. So I knew it was gonna take much energy, much energy to be out here talking to people, you know, on a regular. So, but the good news for me was that I started late. So it doesn't feel like I was running all year. I mean, I had a short timeframe and now I'm really feeling that short timeframe 'cause I'm like, oh, it's less than 40 days before this election. Let me. So things have been going well. The reception has been going, I mean, just really amazing. God has sent me some people that have been awesome. My campaign manager, Nichelle Bolden is her name.
She's on here. She said, she.
Oh, she is, okay. She has been, and, and I have to say this, uh, we have only known each other less than a year. You have to meet people and you just kind of go, you know? I mean, we clicked, you know? It's been less than a year and, and when I met her, of course, you know, none of this was on the table. And then, um, when it was time for me, and she kept saying to me, she said, I don't even understand. I don't even understand why you're not on school board. You know, but I'll leave you alone, 'cause I'm like, I ain't doing that. You know, she said, no, I, I just don't get it. And every time we'd have a comment, I, you know, I, well, whatever. So when I finally decided, she said, I'm going to help you.
Right.
And so she has been a God-sent, a God-sent. Our, our daughter-in-law, uh, married to my wonderful son, but she's our daughter too. She's in this space of, of helping campaigns and stuff. So she would say things, like, Mom, I don't even know why. I don't know why you don't just go on it. Just, yeah. So when I called her, I said, I think God told me to run. She's like, of course he is.
Yeah, yeah.
And I was like, okay, so the, the confirmations is my point. A lot of confirmations that this is what I'm supposed to do. I'm looking at the situation in the school district with the children and we have kicked the academic achievement down the can way too long. It's time to stop. It's time to pay attention. It's time to raise the bar. Our children are brilliant. Uh, you won't convince me of anything else. Our children are brilliant, yet this is, this is what's in my craw. We have, I'm saying we, the, 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 the acceptance of mediocrity is, is what has compelled me to run.
Right.
This is as good as it gets for those kids. They can't do anymore. They got all these issues. They got trauma. They got, they, they in poverty. They, you know, parents aren't doing their job, blah, blah, blah. All these different excuses why the children can't succeed. And so what happens in that environment, if you believe that these kids can't learn, then you're not gonna work hard to help them.
Right.
And that's what we're seeing.
Yeah.
In a lot of our situations, not all, 'cause we got some schools that's doing quite well. We got some of our black and brown kids that are doing quite well in, in just about any of these schools, but collectively.
Yeah.
Right. The mentality is, this is as good as it gets. So, so we celebrate things like, oh, Cincinnati is the top urban district in the whole state of Ohio and we got a 2.5, which is below the three-point requirement for state, for what the state requires, but we're the best of all of them.
Right.
So you're the best in the, in the, in the whole little pond. That's nothing to get excited about. And we're talking about kids' lives. We're not talking about ridges and things we're making in the factory. We talking about kids.
Right, yes, right, right. And I, um, I'm one of, I'm, I'm, I'm a part of that, um, whole conglomerate. So I drive the, uh, city, um, school buses. I drive the school buses.
Okay.
And I just look at, the school that I have now, I just look at, you know, me driving and if you can imagine like the chaos that goes on the bus. But you know, you kind of frustrated, but then you have to think like, man, these kids, they just don't know. Like, it has to be something other than me being frustrated and wanting them off the bus.
Right.
It has to be somewhere. I have to go an extra mile. I know I'm just a bus driver, but I have to go a little bit of an extra mile to say, you know what? Maybe I should like, you know, before they get off the bus, say, hey, man, have a great day, you know? This is your year, like something.
Yes.
Just to like, um, break the edge.
Yep.
You know, so, um, it's, it's, it's real, it's real. What I see is that, you know, no one wants to really take the blame. And it's kind of like, when I hear you speaking on that, it's like, no, yay, we're the best. And no, we're not. 2.5 or whatever. No, no, we're not. So it's like, when I look at everything, like, the manager might wanna put it on you. You might wanna put it on this person. That person put it on the board. It's so much going around. So it's like accountability and, and, and just trying to all work together. Come up with some solution that helps us all succeed and get these kids where they need to be.
Right.
So what do you see, what do you see as far as one of the number one things that we all need to do to get on the same page? When it comes to bus drivers, um, the schools, the parents, what, what do you see?
Okay, if I had to name one thing, 'cause we all got a role.
Yes.
But you ask for one thing.
Or some, or some things.
I'll give you one. I'll give you one thing.
What's your top, what's your top thing?
My one thing is, is easy. You said it. It's encouraging the kids.
Encouraging the kids.
And believing they can achieve.
Yes, right.
Because if you believe in your heart that they can achieve, then you're going, your behavior will follow.
Yes.
And, and what you speak into that child's mind, um, uh, into their, their hearing will follow. Just like you said, when they get off the bus, have a great day. Oh, man, go do it. Go get them or something.
Right.
That repeated will make a big difference. Cause they'll remember. They say, oh, yeah, Mr. Tico, I remember him. He was my bus driver. Every morning he says something that just really helped me, 'cause I was feeling bad about myself and blah, blah, blah. So in whatever role that we all have is belief. You got to pour belief into these kids 'cause some of them are in environments where there's no hope or no belief.
Exactly.
We don't know which one. Some of them can look real good and still be in that environment.
Right.
So if, if one thing is believing, 'cause that's gonna drive all of our behaviors. It's gonna drive, um, parents to, okay, if I believe my child is gonna do well, then I'm gonna make sure they have, to the best of my ability, what they need. You know, they need clean clothes or food or whatever. I'm gonna make, if I can't get it, I'm gonna go out here and find it for them.
Right.
So it's gonna drive that behavior. It's gonna drive teachers to welcome the children in and teach like they're going to get it.
Right.
It's gonna drive the administration to say, okay, we have to stretch ourselves to make sure we provide resources so that the people in the classrooms and the buildings have what they need. Cause we believe these children can do better.
Right.
And we're not gonna cherry pick which kids we think gonna do better, if you understand what I'm saying. Cause that's what happens a lot too, where only these kids are gonna do so well. You know, we have to believe all of them will.
Right, yeah, yeah. Because, um, at, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say the name of this school because I'm gonna speak good about the school. But at the, at the, that, one of the schools, where the school that I'm doing now is New Path and it's like a behavioral school, right? So they like, they get in there, they do good enough, they get to go to, uh, like another school, public school, state public school. But it's like, I noticed that, I'm looking at the, um, administrators and the, and the, I think he's the principal. And I'm just looking like, okay, everybody there is like, they're being patient. They're taking their time with the kids, with the children. And when they, you know, walk into the bus, hey, have a great day, such and such, you know, it's gonna, I, I, I forgot to get you that today. I'm gonna make sure I get it to you tomorrow. So it's all positivity. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see that because sometimes you can see the administration, the teachers get, you can see the frustration. And you can, and you can hear it when they, when they're speaking to the children. So it's a good thing that, that school, I commend them on doing what they do.
Right.
And then I want to go back what you said, we just said, I'm only a bus driver because you're more than a bus driver to these kids. Because like she was saying, like, they come home, you don't know how they date, you know, their, their parents. It's really, like you said, where they would start. It really starts from home. When their parents send their children out to school, it starts from there. So some parents can, you know, don't give their love, their children love or whatever. And like you said, the environment, what they come from. So you the first person before they hit the school ground, you the first person they see. So you make a big impact on them. So you can make a big impact. They can just be in like, in a house, being abused or whatever. And you can say, hey, have a good day. Have a good day and this and that. It was uplifting and encouraging for them. Then the next step, it goes to, to the school building and with those teachers or whatever. So not that you're just a bus driver. I mean, you work for Cincinnati Public School. You're more than just a bus driver. Them kids gonna have to look up to you.
Right. You're, you're an adult in that environment.
Yes.
And, and we all have a part. Now, I'll just jump in and share some things, 'cause this point Marcia is making is very important. If a child doesn't have a view to their future, that's a problem. Right, right. So I'll give you an example. A couple of years, uh, Marcia and I, we've taught at a school, uh, Roheal. Was it Roheal?
Oh, Roheal, yeah.
Roheal School is very poor community. And, uh, we had these kids and they came to us for tutoring. And I had this one, uh, young man had an odd name. And so because of the odd name, I'm sure they were picking on him. Right. He's really a smart guy, but he never showed that he was smart. You need to hear me. But what I had to do in order to teach him, it wasn't that I needed to teach him. I needed to make him feel good about himself and work on his self-esteem. Once his self-esteem was impacted, then he did great in his grades.
Right.
So you have to touch a child and if a child knows a future, well, then you could get them to do pretty much anything that you wanna do. And I'll say this, uh, a good friend of ours.
And I'll say this, uh, uh, a good friend of ours, uh, Gwen Robinson. Uh, two of our kids went to Gwen Robinson and at the time she was the principal for the Academy Award Languages.
Hmm.
And so one of the things that we did when our kids went to school, we actually interviewed the principal.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't let our kids just go to school, just go to school. If the principal didn't pass our test, they weren't going there. So I, I interviewed her and this is a school at the time, they had like, I don't know, six different languages. And so I'm, I'm interviewing her and I said, well, help me understand, how are these kids learning these languages? She said, listen. Any child could learn two, three, four language.
Hmm.
I got my ahah. What she was really saying is, is that if we take the limits off of kids, they can learn anything.
Right, right.
It's, it's what happens is we, we put a limit on our kids and then they dumb down to the, to the limit that we put on our kids. And that's the problem. We have to really address, it's very subtle, but it's very, very important.
Right, yes, yes. Yes, that makes a lot of sense. That makes a lot of sense. But I'm interested to know from you, Chuck, how did, how did you feel when your, when your, when the light bulb went off and your wife said, and she said, I'm going to run? And what, what, what were you saying? Uh-oh, what were you saying, Chuck?
I said, well, how big a check do I have to write? Hey, listen here. Now, this is a little training. People ask me this question all the time. My wife is a strong wife. So therefore, when I was young in our marriage, I used to try to do all this stuff. And that don't work.
Right.
So we had to work like this.
As a team.
As a team.
Yeah.
And so that wasn't really the question because I knew her heart and I knew she has what I call a teaching anointing. See, not everybody can teach.
Right.
There's certain people that have a teaching anointing. Our son has a teaching anointing. I mean, watch him and, and he, and that's a whole nother story in and of itself. But he became a teacher because most of the teachers, when he was coming up, couldn't relate to him.
Hmm.
And he's got a gift. He can go into any room within five minutes. He can hypnotize, hypnotize all the kids and they do what he tell them to do and they give you grace. It's really amazing to see him do that. And I'm like, you gave us.
All that.
All of the.
Problem.
Right.
For years. How did you get all that? And that's our son. So, so Marcia has a teaching anointing. So when she said that's something she needed, she wanted to do, I said, I got you sweetheart.
Right.
I got you. Don't worry. I'll coach you. I ain't going to get in your way, but I'm going to coach you. Let's, let's talk about winning, how to do it in the right kind of way.
Right. That's amazing, man. That's amazing. And the, and the main thing that I heard to make all of this, of course God, but one of the main things is that when you, when you put a teamwork effort into it, it's, it's almost no way you can stop it. If you, if you have a goal and you can see it and you say, hey, and you got your partner that, um, you know, by your side and really going for you, you can make it.
Yes.
That's right. You could do anything. So I'm, I'm, I, I like to say, yeah, I, I commend you on that. But you, when you were here for your interview, I was like, yeah, yeah, it's on, it's on the popping. So you feel good about running right now, right? How do you feel about the, you know, the, um, possibilities of you getting one of those seats?
I'm excited about that. I am so ready to roll up my sleeve and work with the other six board members, you know, Cincinnati Public Schools has, they have seven board members. I am so, I'm excited about that.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm looking forward to us, you know, just looking at where are we really being and, and, and building a, a sense of accountability and collaboration around, let's do what's right for kids.
Right, right.
You know, if we need to kind of take a step back and look at, you know, are we moving too fast and, or too slow or whatever, we can do that. And then at the time in which I would be coming on the board, they're start, we're starting our next round of strategic planning for the next three years. So it's a perfect time to start to look at what's the strategy for the district? What are our strategic goals? And for me, it has to be whatever we do, has to be an impact on the academic outcomes of our kids. I say on the, on the, uh, campaign trail, I said, look, the district's responsibility is to make sure our kids, when they graduate, they're able to read, communicate and be equipped to make adult level decisions.
Yes, right.
I don't care what path they go on, they got to be able to do those things, no matter what. Cause and, and be able to use those skills to enter the careers that they want, the lifestyle they want. That's, you know, that they enjoy and are lucrative. Because our kids, you know, they got to make money. They got to take care of their family. We can't look at them like, all they're going to do is fifteen dollars an hour at McDonald's for the rest of their life. No. They have to be equipped to at least pursue those things that's going to give them a great lifestyle.
Yeah.
So anything that we do, decisions that we make as a, as a board have to be around what's going to make these students successful. So there, there, you know, we talk about where they're going, you know, three pathways. They can go into the military, they can go to college, or they can go right into, you know, straight into a career. And when they talk about that, for me, all three of them are career paths. And you can't straight line a kid and say, well, they're going to go into such and such a career and that's all they're going to do for the rest of their life. I'm a perfect example of that.
Right.
You know, because I started in I T, but I can teach too.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I went and worked in the church and did, you know, project management, all that. I was leveraging skills all along. We have to build that lifelong learning mentality in our kids so that they know they have options.
Right.
You don't have to stay on the same path. You can have options.
Yes.
If we build a proper foundation for them through their K to twelve experience in CPS.
Mm-hmm.
They, they can have a variety of options, but we do have to prepare them for the next step. So, yes.
Yeah, I want to jump in on this because this is a really important point. What we did in our home was we made sure our kids were prepared.
Mm-hmm.
If they were leaving the house after high school, they were fully prepared to deal with life.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So in other words, we taught them leadership. We taught them how to communicate. We taught them how to listen. We, we, uh, they started off reading proverbs first.
Hmm.
What does, what does a foolish man do? What does a wise man do? Write me a report.
Hmm.
What does a rich man do? What does a poor man do? Write me a report. So we had them, and then we, you know, on Sunday, we'd have a conversation around the dinner table.
Right, right.
And so the kids had to present what they learned and their brothers and sisters there and we're there. And we asking them questions. So they had to not only say it, but they had to defend what they were saying.
Right.
And so we were teaching them how to be able to thrive coming out. Now, this is very important because of what's happening today, AI and everything that's going on.
Mm-hmm.
My uncle.
Mm-hmm.
He worked in a factory all his life. He could barely read. Uncle Joe.
Mm-hmm.
He could barely read, probably had a third grade education. So he was the silent generation, okay? World War II type people.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
Could barely read, but he stayed in his job, had a family, wife and kids. He stayed in his job, working in a factory, his whole career.
Mm-hmm.
My generation, baby boomers, we probably have three, four jobs.
Right.
But because of AI, young folks today, they might have seven to 10 different jobs. Because technology is flipping things quicker. Now here's the danger. If you don't have the ability to learn how to go from spot to spot to spot to spot to ju, you know, keep on moving up the ladder, then guess what? You end up getting killed in our society.
Right.
That's where this thing is going. So that's why education is crucial today. We have to give kids some fundamentals where they can always grow into the next step.
Right.
I, I, I'll just stop that. I just wanted to throw that out there. That's really important.
That is very important. But I had a question. It's for us on the board. Do they have like younger people on the board?
So, so the Board of Education, they are elected officials. So you can, anybody can opt to run for the board and we have to be elected by the, the citizens of the school district.
Right. So, so are there any now? Are there any younger? That's my question. Are there any?
It's very diverse age wise. You have, you have some older, um, board members. You have some kind of in that Gen X. You have some millennials.
Okay.
Um, age, and then you have some that have, um, children in the district. And then some like me, we have grandchildren. Two of our granddaughters are in the district, so.
Because it just seem like, like especially in this air.
Yeah.
It needs to be mixed.
Yes.
I think, I really think it needs to be mi, mixed because you need somebody like, you know, older and who, who already been there. And because kids need that older than mother and their firmness that, you know, you know, they need all of that. And then they need somebody younger who on, in this air, who can, they can relate to them and they can, you know, they can get their attention too. So I think if it's because in this air, I just feel like a lot of kids just feel like they don't want to listen to a lot of people already. So it's got to be something interesting to them, to capture them. So it can be, so I feel like, you know, like older people on the board with younger people in that way, the, the younger people probably can pull them in. But the older people is really pushing to the, to the younger ones to get them in, from the background of what, you know, you was, the older people expect that on how to get them to learn the skills and.
Yeah.
To keep it going. So I, that's just my own opinion.
So let me, let me, so let me address kind of what you said, because that's, you're right. You know, the diversity of age, I think is a strength for our board. Um, so this, this is an opportunity for me to kind of talk about the role of the board versus the role of the superintendent.
Okay.
Versus, you know, what's happening in the classroom. So, uh, the role of the school boards here in Ohio is to provide oversight for the district. So as elected officials, we represent the community. We represent the community's voice around educating the children that are in our, in our district.
Right.
So we set policy and we make sure the money is management, managed right. And we have money to pay for all this stuff. And we, we, um, you know, we actually set policy and direct curriculum.
Okay.
Those are our roles. We have three employees, the board does. We have the superintendent, the treasurer and the internal auditor.
Hmm.
Okay. So the internal auditor, they make sure everything is being run right. We don't have any compliance issues, that kind of stuff. The treasurer is the CFO of the district. They make sure that we have our, our, our monies are coming in. They do, they help with the budget. They do all of that financial management stuff. Very critical, very critical, um, role because they can keep their eye on that kind of stuff.
Right.
The superintendent is the one that runs the district. This is where folks don't really understand the difference between the roles of the board and the roles of, of the superintendent. The superintendent is hired by the board. The superintendent is accountable to the board to meet the academic, the, the whatever goals, all the strategic goals that we set for the, for the school district. So, um, you know, collaboratively, we talk about what do we want to see? And then collaboratively, we set those goals. It's the superintendent's job and her staff, his or her staff, to make it happen. So think about it, if you had like a business, the board is your governance. The CEO is the one that's running the business.
Right.
They hire the staff, they set the programs in place. They should have a vision on how they're going to meet these goals. They are accountable to the board and who's accountable to the community.
Right.
So that's the loop that happens. At the building level, the superintendent again runs the whole district. So she's, that person is in, in charge of hiring principals, hiring teachers, making sure all the buildings are staffed, making sure all the buildings are staffed with the right kinds of staff to meet the needs of the children.
Yes.
So the, the, the interaction there at the building level is really key and, and we miss it. Because that's where the parents have to start their engagement first, is at that building level. It's with that principal and those teachers in that building. So that's, and so to your point about diversity, absolutely. You know, they see a diverse teaching staff. You got young teachers, older teacher, more seasoned teachers. But at the end of the day, they all got to care about kids and they all got to believe these kids can learn and they all got to work together to make that happen.
Right.
Yes, yes, yes. I see, um, Nichelle says, uh, we need people with knowledgeable and, um, historical, um, experience. And I'm, I'm, when I see, when I read your resume, I'm like, how is she not going to get a seat? That's what I thought. I said, if she don't get a seat, this is crazy. So with that being said, I want to ask you this. Now, you know, I, I, I don't expect you to, you know, go in negative and everything, but is this some spots or some people that's on there that you're like, oh, come on now. We can, we need somebody to really, really get in there and dig in and give them, you know, give the, um, the citizens what they need as far as help, real help. And we want to address real concerns, but is it, people, are there people in there or on the seats or in the board and you say, they need to be, they really need to be gone?
Well, first of all, I, I can't dictate that because they are elected, just as I will be.
Right.
By the people.
Right.
So as citizens, we have to learn how to hold our board members accountable. So when I was not running for the board.
Right.
I stayed engaged. So I can see, okay, who's saying what? Because all of the, all of the board business is done in public. There's no behind this. There's a couple of things that they can do in what they call executive session where it's not public. But all board business is public.
Right.
So as a citizen, I can see all of their business. And when they have their full board meetings, when they have their committee meetings, all of that's public. So as a citizen, I need to see who's saying what and what are their positions on certain issues pertaining to educating our kids. That's the responsibility for all of us.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, I can't do nothing about anybody on that board because they were elected just like I was. Now, are there things that need to be improved? Absolutely. So I'll speak to the issues that need to be addressed.
Okay, yes.
So the issue is that we have to make data-driven decisions.
Mm-hmm.
So the board, the current board, they made decision to, to rearrange the whole school district. And that's what they planned out and that's what was implemented this school year. Uh, a big part of that was the introduction of middle schools. Now, I am not anti-middle school. In fact, it might've been a good thing to do middle schools. You know, there's pros and cons to it. When we first went to middle schools, it was for an academic reason. The, the superintendent at the time was trying to bridge those seven and eighth graders into the college, I mean, into the high school experience by allowing them to take higher mathematics and, and English and that kind of thing so they could smooth on in there. Now, other people got other reasons they think it was done, but that, I knew that superintendent and I knew her heart and I knew that's what she was after.
So let me, did they, I don't mean to cut you off, but did they stop middle school like some year, like ten, twenty years ago?
Some years.
Because I remember they stopped it when I was supposed to go to middle school, but I went right to high school.
Right.
And I was like, why didn't you go to middle school?
Yeah, I, I don't.
You went to middle school? I didn't go to middle school.
They had some, see, I'm not originally from here. So when my, our kids went through, they did not have middle schools.
Right.
And our children went through, they went, you had, you had some seven to 12 programs, but a lot of the elementaries were, you know, K to six, and then you, they had a few depending on the program now that I remember back. But anyway, so when they went to the middle school model, the challenge was the discipline. You know, you know, those kids are hormonally challenged at 12, at 13. They look pretty great around their age. So, you know, so you had all these challenges and so I'm not going to debate whether that was a good move or not. But the, the heartburn I had was the decisions were made without academic data.
Early 2000.
It was made without, what's the impact on the academics of these kids that you're moving? And, and it was a slow rollout and, and, and it was said in the meeting when the vote was taken, when the presentations were happening was this is not based on academics. This is based on making sure we have, we have good building utilization. Because at the time, uh, there was a bill in Columbus that, that it was perceived that if we didn't get certain levels or certain numbers in the buildings, that the district would have to sell those buildings to charter schools. So that was what was told to the, to the public. But in reality, there was some, some other pieces of data that wasn't there. Regardless of all of that, you still got to know what the academic outcomes are going to be when you move. And it was like 15,000 kids going to be impacted. That's almost half of your district.
That's a lot, yeah.
So y'all not looking at no, did you baseline where the kids are? What you expect them to do when they get there? None of that. So that was my biggest heartburn. That was probably back in December when they had all the meetings. They had a seven hour long board meeting.
Wow.
Two hours and 45 minutes of public discussion, you know, public in the mic. Two hours and forty-five minutes of public discussion, you know, public in the mic saying, a lot of folks, no, don't do it, don't do it. Yeah, some folks said, yeah, do it, do it.
So like for two hours or something, pe- people from the public were coming and speaking on things? Wow.
That night. So the board voted to move forward. And my whole thing was, e- e- even if you decide to move forward, slow it down, cause here's the other thing that was missing was parent engagement.
Right.
Now, there were presentations made, but that's not engaging. You go, go to the school and say, here's what we getting ready to do.
Right.
Uh, any questions? No, okay. And that's it. You didn't talk to the parents, you didn't engage them to talk about what's the impact on the scheduling of these schools, the locations of these schools? What happens if you got a kid in, in, that was over here and now you're sending them over here? How they gonna get to school? We have a ton of issues right now with transportation.
Oh, man, yeah.
With transportation and, and it's, it's playing out in so many different ways. Our, our, our one granddaughter, she's in second grade on the west side, one of the west side schools. And we've noticed that more, more people are bringing their kids to school in the car because they don't trust the bus schedule because it was just chaos.
It really was. I had one of those issues.
Yeah, so you understand what I'm saying. You have parents who didn't even know where their kids were going to school until two weeks before school starts. So it was just a lot.
Though, why was it so confused, like messed?
Because you didn't talk to the parents before you moved.
Right.
Now, they'll, they'll admit to it now. Some of the board members say, you know, we didn't do enough engagement. Okay, so uh, good, fall on the sword for, let's not make that mistake again. Let's, whatever else you do, you gotta have the parents at the table.
Yeah.
You have to have the people. Your parents are your customers. Like it or not, even that parent who comes at you all crazy and all that stuff, that parent is still a customer because that parent can decide what school they want to send their child to. And you can disagree all day about how you don't think that's a good decision, still their kid, and they can send them wherever they want.
Right.
Right.
So if you don't acknowledge that, if you don't appreciate that, if you don't welcome that, even if they don't understand, you know, what all was entailed in the decisions, at least have the conversation, look, we really need to move on this. Let's talk about how we make this transition smooth for you.
Yeah.
That didn't happen.
Yeah, let, let me jump in here, cause this, I wanna, this is a selling point. This is one of the reasons why you need to vote for my wife. Yes, yes, yes. The reason, the reason being, what she gave you is backstory. The reason why she knows that backstory is cause Marcia has been sitting on all these meetings for years. Years. Years.
Yeah, yeah, I hear that.
She's been watching these folks on the board for years.
Right.
With an S. She also dropped something she didn't say. A number of the superintendents, she got their cell phone numbers, they got a question, they called her.
What?
She ain't on the board, they called her. They want her input. Why? Cause they know she's watching, like a hawk. And she's for the parents and parent engagements.
Right.
You understand? So she's got a heart for that. She knows that. So they wanna get feedback from her.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't oversell it. Don't look at me like that.
I've had great uh, relationships with, with superintendents in the past. And so, and I have a lot of respect for those that were really, one of the things, I, I'll say this too, is, is one of the things that we need to do a better job in the district. Some initiatives were working very well. And my daughter pointed this out to me one day. She said, mom, they don't give anything enough time to work. They gonna change it, you know, so, so we had some superintendents had some great ideas. Now, one thing had to change and it was out of their control, cause COVID hit. And the world turned upside down. And so a lot of those initiatives that we had that were starting to track well for our kids came to a screeching halt, cause they were no longer in the building anymore. So, you know, this is an opportunity to go back and say, well, what was, we were doing this before the pandemic. Does this have any relevance now? And what parts of that can we pull back together to help serve the kids? And so, um, so I, and I sat at some of those meetings with the superintendents that were implementing those things. It was great. You know, great ideas. It was very um, community-based. The schools decided what kinda uh, niche programs they wanted in their buildings to draw the kids in and to get them interested in the stuff. You had things like um, art education. You had things like um, uh, one school had a, a music and dance program, cause that was the thing. Not all the kids had access to music and, and the arts and those kinda things. You had IT programs going on in some school. We had, even had entrepreneurship starting to be taught at the elementary level. So there were things that those, the communities came together and said, this is what we would like for our school. But then COVID hit. Cause it was, you know, starting to take off and then COVID came and then scrambling back and everybody come back like, whoo.
And they just totally forgot about those programs.
We got through that, but then, yeah, well, nobody went back to see, okay, where are we? Then it became this whole thing about um, uh, uh, this whole thing about let's do all this big reorganization of the district.
Do you think with, with what you just said, as far as like, um, you know, you had a lot of great uh, programs that um, were, were needed, it seems.
In desire.
In desire. So do you think that there are some people put in place to try to make that superintendent, certain superintendents or somebody under to make them fail, so they, they, they kinda like jealous? So they want that program to fail and they wanna, soon as they make one little simple mistake, ah, I knew it, I need to stop this program. It's no good. Do you think there's some people like that?
Uh, probably is, but I, you know, I can't worry about that now. We need, here's what we need right now. We need, we need to have our board and our superintendent. First of all, let me just go ahead and, and say this. Uh, the district is on their fourth superintendent since COVID. Now, I am a firm believer that all that disruption really hurt our kids.
Right.
Because whenever you have leadership turnover like that.
It's almost one a year.
Yeah, and then, so I, I don't wanna go into all the reasons why all of that happened, but we are where we are. And so it, it's incumbent upon us to hold ourselves accountable. Uh, the board and the current superintendent to hold ourselves accountable to coming up with, with stretch goals. Now, cause little goals that we might've had before ain't gonna cut it, cause you know, the kids aren't progressing at the rate they need to. We need to work together and have those, those goals and hold our current superintendent accountable for having the plan and, and, and to operationalize and implement everything to meet those goals. That's where we are. Regardless of folks trying to undermine and all of that kinda stuff. If the board hires the superintendent, it's the board's job to support the superintendent. You support the person that you hire.
Right.
And so that's my intent, is to support. And, but I'm also holding the superintendent accountable for doing their job.
Right.
Cause I can't, I'm not supposed to run the school district. We paying you to do that.
Right. So let me ask you this. Is this, is the, is the, oh, no favoritism or nothing like that, but does a superintendent reach out to Abe Marcia a little? I need to ask your question. Has it, has it, does that happen or is it happening?
With the current one, no.
Okay, okay.
But I'm open for that. I have, you know, I have to have that. I don't have a problem. What you, you know, Marcia, what do you think about X, Y, Z? Oh, absolutely.
Cause it can't be, it can't be no favoritism with the superintendent, she's gonna be on board. No, it's, like you said, it's up to the public.
It's up to the public, yes.
They can't look at that like that, so yeah, that's um, but I wanted to ask a question also, well, it's actually my, my sister's question. But I do kinda wanna ask that too, like with, with, she says, uh, do you think Trump will um, stop what y'all are doing? But kinda, I wanna help with that is do, do you think he has any effect on what like, some of these programs depleting and, you know, certain things out of order, you think he?
Well, Trump is one level. I'll answer that in a minute. The biggest threat right now is what's going on in Columbus.
What, what's up with Columbus?
Okay.
Oh, man, uh-oh.
So this is, this is the lesson in school funding. Um, Cincinnati has always struggled with getting the proper level of funding from the state of Ohio.
Right.
And the reason for that is, first of all, our funding formula was deemed unconstitutional. It was supposed to have been fixed when it was deemed, I forget the year, but it's been over twenty years, maybe longer. It was deemed unconstitutional by the, the Supreme Court of Ohio. Now, what people don't always understand is that school funding comes from the, from the state budget. Who says the state budget? It's our elected officials. It's our state representatives and our senators. Collectively, they agree on a budget. Well, when that was deemed unconstitutional, they should've fixed it, but they didn't. It went years and years and the public allowed it to go, cause we never voted these people out. Until five years ago, we had a bipartisan plan to fairly fund school, public education in Ohio. It was, it was a bipartisan, it was a Republican and a Democrat. They came up with a, a bill, they called it the Cup Patterson Bill. That's the name for them. So it worked its way through and got passed. So the, it was rolled out in the budget twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one budget, cause they do a two-year budget. So it was in phases, three phases, first year, and it was based on funding children.
Right.
Instead of looking at how much money does the, does your district have, cause Cincinnati was deemed a wealthy district. Yes, because we had these Fortune five hundred companies and so their tax bases were being, so like, oh, they don't need the money, cause they got, you know, they got local taxes, they can handle that.
Right.
Well, the truth of the matter is, we had highest poverty rate among our students in the state. So all that aside, Cup Patterson dealt with that. They figured out a way to roll this out so we can start to fund the children. There's X amount of dollars per child. And if your child had other needs, you add a little bit more to it, so forth and so on. So they rolled it out, they rolled the second phase out in the twenty-one, twenty-three budget. Then we come here to this budget, last phase. And those folks in Columbus say, oh, no, we not doing that. It's too expensive. We can't sustain that level of funding for public schools. So they stopped and so they, they froze it. And now you've got school districts who are expecting millions of dollars that never came.
Right.
It's even more unfair than that. So the budget has a line item that says public school funding. Instead of fairly funding traditional school districts, what they have done is plowed a bunch of money over to, I'm talking to the tune of almost a billion dollars into vouchers.
Wow.
So vouchers started out being for people who couldn't afford to send their kids to private schools. They get a voucher, they can use it for the tuition.
Right.
And it has grown now to a program that subsidizing rich people's private school education for their kids. You can make six figures and get a voucher.
Wow, that's crazy. That's very unfair.
And that's the truth. I had some, I, I haven't looked at the numbers, I'll be honest. But um, we were at a forum couple, few days ago and one of the folks there in that neighborhood, they said, you know who the highest uh, user of vouchers in our, in Hamilton County is Indian Hill.
Now, that's really crazy.
That's very crazy.
They're well off. Any, any hills is well off.
And they actually got real good schools too, but Indian Hill. So, yes, Trump, so, so that's the state, that's the real big threat. You know, everybody looking at Trump, you need to look, come on down here to the state, cause they tearing up some stuff for real here. So what the state does not send us, we have to make up by asking our local taxpayers to fill, fill it in. So the folks looking at my tax bill is like, yeah, but y'all need to talk to them people y'all sent to Columbus, cause they're not giving us our fair share. That's the fight.
I wanna know how in the world can we conquer that? Like, how can we get that back on track?
You, you have, we have, first of all, we start, need to start paying attention to our local and state elections.
Right.
And we have to start looking at things that impact our vote, like gerrymandering. I know people have heard that term. They're redrawing districts and they trying to lock in and keep the power and all that. We have to go, we have to get knowledgeable about that stuff and we have to demand that they stop the foolishness. As long as they can keep people in the dark and keep people at home,
Come on.
they win.
Come on.
They win all the time. And so we're busy looking at Trump.
Smoke and look.
We looking up here and it's, the danger will rob us of this right here. Right here, in, in Ohio. And so that's just, that's the funding piece, the other thing, they're, they're looking at all kinds of things to dismantle public education. And it's not just here, it's, it's everywhere.
Everywhere, right.
But we gotta be concerned about here.
Right.
Cause when you do that, then the ones that suffer the most are the ones who are the most helpless.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like, it's been like that for so long. It's like, when you mentioned Indian Hills is getting this large amounts of money, large amounts of funding.
Citizens there.
The citizens.
Them six-figure people, they get a, they get a subsidy on their kids' private education.
Afford to pay for.
And they can pay.
Why does they always get, I mean, so let me ask this question. For the people out there that don't, well, I want, it's two things that I want.
You want me to talk about Trump though, real quick though?
Yeah, talk, talk about Trump.
The Trump thing, the Trump move dismantling the Department of Education exposes our most vulnerable kids, cause we get title money from the government, the Title One money. So that's, that's for, for um, uh, people in poverty, kids, you know, making sure that they have, they have some supplemental needs like tutoring and um, those kinda things. Um, professional development for teachers, those, those things to help bring them up.
Right.
And so billions of dollars there across the country, you know, Cincinnati Public Schools get their share of that. Also, the importance of the Department of Education is to make sure that um, there's no discrimination in education as well.
Right.
So a lot of that stuff, those protections can be eroded if he's successful in, in dismantling that, that um, uh, that department. And then lastly, there's a program called IDEA, which is specific, specifically for children with disabilities. That money sits at the federal level as well. So he put all these parameters around, how can you get that money? And you know, if you doing DEI, oh no, you might not get no money. You know, that, that's the threat at the federal level.
That's a lot of roadblocks I see put up everywhere. It's always, when you just about to reach that goal, it's a roadblock, bam. You can't do it now. So I did wanna, this is something that Chuck, Chuck, this is something that the people, I think the people need to know. And I don't know if it's still um, the case in your situation, but he said as far as how you get paid.
Oh, on the board?
Yes. So how do you, explain to these people how you get paid, cause they, oh, they just want money. Uh, you know, you never know what people thinking. So how do you get paid?
So board members get a stipend of about, I think it's a hundred and twenty dollars per meeting. We basically might have, we have maybe two board meetings a month.
Right.
And a, a committee meeting, if you don't, you know, everybody's on a committee. So we talking a hundred and twenty dollars a month times three meetings, which is less than a thousand dollars a month. And we're expected to donate that back to the kitty. So being on the school board is a labor of love.
Yes, it's all love.
Labor of love and, and donating it back actually affords us the opportunity to do some, some other networking with other board members. So virtually, it's not a paid job.
Right. So they can know like that you just not.
I'm not in, look, the money, look. That's not, that is not a driver. Now, a lot of, you know, you got other elected officials, they get a salary, but not just, not your low. And this is by Ohio law. Ohio law is the reason why we compensated the way we are.
Right, yeah, because I, um, you know, just, when he, when, when um, when your husband told me that, I said, what? I did not know that. I thought, I don't know what I thought. I thought it maybe was like, you know, y'all get paid like, I don't know how much money I thought y'all get paid, but it was like a nice little penny. But I guess I was wrong about that. Which is um, makes it all the reason why. With you being so hard, I mean, going so hard for your, your community and, and the children, basically, to see them get ahead and you, you know, for Chuck saying, you sitting up in meetings for years, figuring out what's going on. So the people really should know that this lady right here, Ms. Futel, she's really doing it for us. She's trying to see our kids succeed. So she really needs a seat on the board. I have to say that. I believe in my heart that she, she, she really needs a seat on the board because it's just too much. You'd have to really read her resume and, and, and just looking at it on paper is just like, just a little glimpse of what it is. So to actually see her in um, in action and just to know, she sat in those meetings. She's not getting paid to sit in those meetings just to see what, to see what's going on. She's taking notes. So when it's time for her to run, what she's doing right now, it's time for her to run, you can know she means business. And she can be ready and prepared for anything you throw her away. Because some of these things, although they apply to her, but some of these things don't directly apply, apply to her. Like when she's talking about um, certain things up in Columbus and, 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 and. Like when she's talking about um, certain things up in Columbus and, and, and different things, but everything don't apply to her, but she's going an extra mile to make it work. So are you ready, Chuck?
Yeah, I just want to say this, uh, Marcia, why don't you talk about, why don't you educate people on how they should vote? Because I think that's important. Uh, you know, how, how can a person pick out the right board member? How should they pick out the right, even, you know, running for city council, you got a lot of city council races. Why don't you talk about that? Because that's one of your, your suits, your strong suits. You're, you're uh, an advocate for voting rights.
Yeah.
Why don't you talk about that?
So um, I, I, I love civic engagement. I am a strong proponent of us being active, engaged citizens because it's all about accountability. The government works for us, not the other way around.
Right.
And so, uh, but they can only be held accountable to the extent that we are educated voters.
Yes.
So when I started my nonprofit, Connecting for Impact, I started there with, with that whole piece. Rather than focusing in hard on the education piece, I've, I focused intentionally on voter education. Not do you know how to register and all that, everybody doing that. But nobody talks about, how do you decide what candidates I should vote for? So you gotta do some research. First of all, you gotta get in touch with what's important to you. So you gotta know your own value system and what you, what you, what you want to see for yourself, your family and your community. You start there, then you think about what kind of character traits would you want to see in a person? So you have those things in mind and you start to look at your research. You start to look at um, you know, you can go to folks' websites, you can read the papers, you can follow the news. You can, now you can Google and find out everybody's business that way, right? But also, what's very important is you go to your community forums. So this is the season, we've been, we had three candidate forums this week, I, I participated, four candidate forums I participated in. I found that when I went to the candidate forum, that was telling for me. I can see them, I can read body language, I can hear how they're coming across. I can see if they're sincere or you just talking to me and, you know, all of those things. And then having the opportunity maybe to talk to them afterwards. So you gotta take the time to look at the candidates. Second thing is, the most important elections are local. So this is a local election, school board, city council or village council, no matter where you live, those are local. Your county elections, which are not this year, all your, all your city and school board stuff is on the odd year. Your county elections and your state elections are on the even years. So you gotta pay attention to those cycles. And so these are the people, we're close, the school board members are dictating policy. We writing policy and providing governance so that your child can get a good education. What's more important than that?
Right.
Yet, I'll talk about school boards, there's not enough emphasis on the school board races. It was, my son was probably, you know, he was at, at Academy World Language before I realized how important school boards were. I'm like, oh, I better be paying attention to this because we had an issue at his school. And I'm like, why aren't we getting removed? It's those seven people that's sitting up in that thing, I'm like, oh. And we both for them? Let me start paying attention who these people are because I ain't liking what they doing here, you know? So we have to start paying attention, same with our county, our city council and village council. Who are these people?
Right.
And do they represent my values and are they helping my community?
That's right.
So same next year when we do state stuff, you can't wait every four years, just vote on the president, expect the world to change. We thought Obama was gonna be the savior of all black people. He's, he's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's these people down here that make the difference. And so the other thing I would say, and this is what I learned, I've, I've been a member of the Democratic Party. I have, I have campaigned for Democratic candidates probably my whole adult life. But I will say this, without hesitation, you vote for the people, not the party.
Come on, say it again, say it again.
Yes, that's true.
So you gotta go do your edu, your, your research, even if you are, if you're Democrat, Republican, wherever you are, you go research the people apart from the party. Because what happens is, you get the piece of paper, you got all the folks on there that they tell you, you should vote for because they're part of the party and you don't know these people, you've never seen them, you never, and you just do that, you get what you get.
Yeah.
So voting, first of all, you gotta vote every single election. The primaries will be around next year in the spring. That's the, that's queuing it up for the state elections. So if you got multiple people running for, let's say, a state senate or um, oh, next year we'll be voting on the, on the deck of governor and all of that, you know, they'll have party primaries. We need to vote in those pro, those uh, party primaries. So we could start to get it to, get um, the people that we want in there. But you gotta do your homework.
Yeah.
You gotta know. So that's what I would say to people, you don't miss an election, your, your local elections are the most important.
The local elections.
Local elections. Because they're the ones that's gonna drive, you know, when it comes to city council, you know, i- i- are your streets safe? Are they clean?
Yeah.
You know, uh, do we have adequate housing? That's the huge thing now, you know, is my neighborhood uh, gonna look the way I need for it to look? You know, is my trash getting picked up? Is my car getting tore up because there's too many potholes? I mean, it's all of that stuff, that's local.
Right.
That's where we live.
Right.
I just told you about the state, you know, they got a, they control a whole lot of things and, and including some pockets of our local budget comes from the state. And if you got people there who don't care about cities getting their money or they got some criteria for you to get that makes no sense, you gotta deal with these people.
Yeah.
You gotta vote in the people that you want and you have to know who your representatives are. Who's my guy or my lady in Columbus?
Yeah.
So if I, if I got questions, I got issues. Now, I do have my state representative and my state senator's cell phone numbers in my, in my phone.
Right.
State Representative Cecil Thomas is in my phone. State Senator Catherine Ingram is in my phone.
Right.
And, and so if I have questions, they will answer.
Yeah.
And we all should have, and they encourage those, those um, those kind of relationships. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think um, with like, you know, we've had certain people on, we had Donald Washington, which is running for um, city, city, uh, seat on, a seat on city council. Lakita Cole, but we're also gonna have him here on the twelfth, right?
On the twelfth, we having them, we just did a fundraiser for Lakita last Sunday, that's what we did. I can remember last Sunday, we did a um, we had a Bingo's watch party and did it in every, and we did a fundraiser for her last Sunday. So now I remember what we did.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's what we did.
Yeah, so. Don't worry about it, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, like, my work's over. You know, my mental, my mental. You're like, where was I? I was like, work all week last week or whatever, you know, like.
Yeah, we did.
So that's what we did, we did a fundraiser for Lakita Cole, so you know, she's rerunning to be back on council. Um, and then Donald Washington, we went to his campaign last year.
Yeah, his campaign, yeah.
And um, he been on our podcast.
Yeah.
Um, Kida been on our podcast about three times, but not one.
It wasn't, it wasn't like running for city related.
It was different, other things she been on for, but she is coming back, her, Donald Washington.
Hopefully, uh, Stefan Pryor.
We waiting to hear back from him to see if he's gonna come.
And it's somebody, it's like two more people that's coming.
Two more people that Donald's bringing with him that we're gonna have, so it's gonna be a lot of people on there.
One is, one is like a mega type person, but I mean, that's good for, you know, just to see.
People need to see everybody, you need to see everybody, yeah.
So that goes back to what you said too. You need to see, you know, vote for, you know, not the party, but the person.
The person.
Yeah, so.
I want to jump in on this part. Because I'm not running, so I can say it and there won't be.
Right.
Repercussions.
There won't be no repercussions.
Right.
Listen to folks, as a people, we tend to vote Democrat. My father, my parents were Democrats, they were precinct captains, they were loyal workers for Chicago Democratic Party for fifty years. You need to hear me. Um, we're the only people out there that votes for a powder party. White folks don't do it, white women don't do it, Hispanics don't do it, Jews don't do it. I got an awakening several years ago, um, the richest person here in the state of Ohio, um, basically, uh, his name is skipping me right now, uh, he was the first billionaire in Ohio. Uh, Carl Linder.
Carl Linder, okay.
Here's the way he did it, I want you to hear it. He gave a million dollars to candidate. A half a million went to Republicans, a half a million went to Democrat. Don't need to hear what I just said.
Yes.
Wow.
He gave his money to both of them, why? Because he wanted to control all of them.
Wow.
And if we on one party, guess what? We don't have no control. So you need to see, so what does that mean? We need to vote for the people that represent our needs.
Right.
Regardless of party, who represents me?
Yeah.
Marcia said it, who represents me? Next thing, this is a, a Mayor Tillery. He taught us this years ago. There are nine people running, he said, listen, you ain't got to vote for all nine.
Right.
Right, but that's a math problem. Because if you vote for one, that means your one vote is nine times more powerful. You got it?
Hmm. Yeah.
I, I'd have, I'd have gave you the secret now.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense.
There are four people running, right, uh, five people running? Five people running for the school board. You don't have to vote for all five.
Right.
You vote for the ones that are gonna meet your interest.
Yeah.
And so that gives you more power when you do that. See, we need to teach our people how to have power in these elections. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
So we need Marcia lady that out. You start first with the local level, because those are people that's touching you every day. These people touch you every day. So you got to make sure that's right. And then the next step is at the state level. They controlling the money for the school. You got to make sure, no, you, you ain't talking right, you ain't acting right, I don't want you. I'm gonna get this other person.
Right.
That person represents my need, right? That's how we do it. So I, I just want to do the educational on how to vote.
Yeah, because um, we do um, um, tend to get caught up on the Democrat thing. And I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, I'm one of them people that year, for years have been caught up on the Democrat. Oh, Democrat, that must be black people, uh, it must mean it. I did no research or nothing, I just like, okay, yeah.
It forces you not to think and that's the problem. See, we get us in a place where we're not thinking about who we voting for.
Right, right.
We're not thinking about who we voting for and so it's easy not to think.
Yeah.
But guess what? Why don't we peel that onion a little bit? Because we see not thinking hasn't done us a lot of good.
Yeah.
Has things changed?
No.
Not really.
That's my point. My point is, is not thinking ain't changing anything. What if we were more intentional about our votes?
Yeah, which we need to be.
Which we need to be.
Yeah.
Because everybody else is.
Right. And, and let me say this last part about voting. After we have voted, we have to hold our elected officials accountable. So that's gonna require us to pay an attention to. You know, you pay attention to the news, you do what you can, but you still may have to go to a city council meeting or a school board meeting. That's why I go, because it's like, I voted and I want to see what they doing. Are they, are they doing what we need for them to do? Because to your point, they're not. As a citizen, I have a voice.
Yeah.
And so once we get people in these places, no matter, even at the state and the national level, we have to pay attention. Are they doing what we need done? I'll never forget, I heard this as a young person. They said, listen, you have, you vote somebody in, they not serving your community, you, you vote them right back out.
Right, right.
And I'll never forget that lesson. I was like, oh, okay, it's just that simple.
And voting them out is not voting for them.
For them, that's right.
Yeah, exactly. Now you, now, now there's a danger in not voting for anyone.
Right.
I have to put that out there because, because it's very easy, say, you know what, I don't like either one of them. You heard that all last year, right? I ain't, I ain't feeling neither one of them. But then you have to still do an assessment sometimes.
On the, on the parties.
Which one, which one is going to either do the most help or do the least damage? That's just reality where we are now. Now, how do we fix that? Then we have to start training up the next generation of servant leadership, leaders. Servant leaders, people who are going to be educated, who will learn how to run for office, who will learn how to govern and do those jobs. And that's a whole nother career path that we don't even talk about in school.
Right.
How do you go into the public uh, servants? How you, how you go into public service and really be a public servant? And, and learn how government works and learn how those things click together. Because that's the way we work our way out. Right now, we in a place, sometimes you got to go like, mm, go hold my nose and do this, but you know, that's all we got. But don't ever not vote.
Right.
Because when you don't vote, we got what we got now.
Man, that's not good.
Yeah, that's not good.
I don't want, I want my money back.
We see that in the national election.
Right.
We saw that.
Because I think in our community and see, in, in the black community too, I think it was like when Obama vote, it was so many black people, I think it was just like a, a learned behavior. Like, we just learned this because he black, so everybody went out there. So once he came out of there, a lot of people didn't go back and vote.
Yeah, that was right.
So I think that was just, that was just because, you know, he was a black president running. You had so many black people out there, they were going hard, you know, it was really out there, like, ah, pulling everybody we can to go. So I see what you're saying, like, and then after that, it was like.
Right.
Nobody, you didn't have those lines as long as they were, you know, after, after him. So, and I think it is, like you said, you, you just used to do Democrat, you know, and I'm guilty of it too. It's like Democrat, that's what we know, that's what the black people, we gotta do Democrat, we gotta stand with Democrat. And it's just a learn, you know, something that we was taught, like, that's all we know. But like you said, we gotta learn the people, not just the Democrat.
Absolutely, absolutely. If you end up voting Democrat, that's who you feel is gonna be the best one. If you feel like the Republican person's gonna do better or the independent person's gonna do better, you do that. But not to vote is dangerous.
Right. Because really the goal, to be honest, uh, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the Democrat, Democrats and the Republicans are really supposed to work together, right? To try to get things done, but they really don't. They really don't, but they really do.
Yes, they should. And you know what? It, because we've kind of, we've kind of fallen off of, of uh, the collaboration and the focus on what's good for America, what's good for the people in general. Everybody got their own.
Agenda.
I think everybody has a, a goal for everybody to have a great life. But we have different ways that we're gonna get there, so that's why you got the party stuff. And, but when people were at least like, we're gonna follow the rule of law and we're gonna protect our democracy and we're gonna protect some basic rights and stuff, when that whole conversation went awry, that's why we're in trouble. Because at least when you had Republicans and Democrats and they could at least agree to disagree and not let the whole, you know, the whole deck of cards just fall apart, so to speak, you know, we had, we had hope.
Yeah.
But now, we, it's, it's, it's literally chaotic and our Democratic candidate for president predicted this. They said, if you don't.
She said a lot of this.
It's gonna happen and this is where we are.
Here we are.
Yeah, so years ago, we had, years ago, this is probably thirty years ago, uh, at the national level, you'd have Democrat and Republicans, they would come together because it was the good of the nation.
Right, right.
And it, and it shifted when it became the good of the party.
Right.
And then it became this whole competition thing of who's gonna beat this party upside the head. We see it right now on a national level. You know, we getting ready to situation right now where um, we have this vote to keep the government up and running. And so uh, uh, the, the president said, listen, if the Democrats don't vote on this, I'm gonna start firing people.
Man.
Because the Democrats won't agree with us, we're just gonna start firing people. That's never happened before.
That's crazy.
So it's gotten to this thing where it's almost like two warring countries in our government. It's so sad, it's so sad. Like I said, my parents spent fifty years in politics and that, and that really didn't happen during their lifetime. They didn't really see this stuff. So it's, it's so unfortunate. It's so unfortunate.
Yeah.
Enough of that.
Yeah, um, um, it is really, really a bad, but I see a good thing happening in some years, maybe, I hope. But um, yeah.
If you vote for the.
If you vote for the right people.
Right people.
If you get it right.
There you go, there it is.
You vote for the right people.
There you go, that's it.
You get the right people in there then.
Today, I just, you know, so we came here today because Ms. Futel is running for the Board of Education.
Yes.
To be on the, uh, get a seat on Board of Education. And what I just learned, you have to vote for her, but like she said, she, they the one who hired the superintendents.
Yes.
And then the superintendent is the one who hire your, the teachers and you know, the staff at the schools, the principal. So if you want better education, things done better for your children, vote for her, she have a whole years of skills, knowledge, very knowledgeable, everything. So you wanna vote for her, cause she's gonna hold that superintendent accountable, so that's what I learned today. If you vote for the board of, you know, people on the Board of Education, they hold the superintendent accountable and that superintendent is the one who do, does all the hiring. And for the teachers and the principal in the school where your kids go to every day, they see those teachers and they see that principal every single day. The principal's sitting in that office every single day and the superintendent is the one that hired that principal. So hire her, she's gonna be on them, she's gonna be on their back and we need change, we need change. She's somebody who never voted, I mean, never run for this board before, so put her in and let's see change.
Yeah, and I'd like to say that, um, you know, just by having Mr. Futel on the show and I saw how, you know, just, just sitting with him, hearing him talk and speak, it, it's, it's, um, you know, so I feel the genuineness of it. And just to know, I said, okay, he said, yeah, I'm gonna have my wife, I said, yeah, we'll have her on here. And just to get to meet her, cause the first, I mean, I don't know, I don't know Ms. Futel, I didn't know. So now her just, you just coming on the show, it's like, I'm listening to your passion. You know, he gave me the, um, the plethora of things that you've done in the past. And it's like, man, you, you, when you put it together, it's very powerful. Just to sit right here and talk to you is very powerful. And with that being said, it's like, this is how you bridge that gap to people not knowing things, you know? Just like seeing them on a podcast and you touching a younger audience and a younger audience is getting engaged. They say, you know what, I'm gonna start doing a little bit of research on something, on one of these people or something. Because it makes me, like, just by, um, engaging with Lakita and Donald and just seeing Stefan, you know, on the video every day, like looking at things that's wrong and you know, trying to, you know, get them fixed. It just make me wanna do more research on this person and to see what they're really about. And when we, when they get on the show, it's like, okay, I see what you're talking about, I, I, I understand you now. Now I know you, and now it's like, you know, to keep the ball rolling, that's what I wanna, I wanna keep the ball rolling in my mind on like who's the, um, I'm not gonna say the perfect, but the, the, the more qualified person to be in that position. So I'm glad you came on today and I, I, I hope, I hope, um, a lot of people tuned in and even on, um, YouTube and later on within the week or whatever before, um, November the 4th, right?
Yes.
I hope they tune in and get to see this and say, you know what, I didn't know her, but guess what? I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna go to the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna register, make sure I'm registered correctly and I'm gonna vote for her.
Yes.
So hopefully they, they, they can see it through the, to the, um, through the, to the, through the screen.
Yes.
The genuineness of it and they get, they get the hint. Because you spit a lot of jewels, I don't know if they caught it, even Chuck was spitting some thing, hey. I don't know if they caught it, but I hope they did. But, um, we wanna say thank you so much for being on, um, Product of the City Podcast and we can't wait to see you on one of them seats or in one of those seats. Cause it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah.
I said it better happen. It better happen, no, but so, so.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with your audience, this is amazing, so I really, really appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, yes.
So is there anything else you wanna say?
Yeah, anything you wanna speak on or anything?
Again, uh, I'm Marcia Futel and for those of you who live in the Cincinnati Public School District, I ask for your vote. I ask for your confidence in me, that I have the children's best interests at heart. Uh, I have no other motivation, cause you heard we don't get paid. But, uh, I have no, no other motivation than to support our school district, support your children so that they have the best outcomes when they leave CPS. So I ask for your vote on November the 4th, thank you.
Yes, yes, so thank you everybody for tuning in to this, uh, week's episode of Product of the City. If you, if one of your friends or you wanna catch a lady, you didn't get to see the whole thing, it's gonna be on YouTube, trust me, you'll love it. Um, check out the edited version on YouTube and thank you so much for tuning in. You have something to say, babe?
Oh, I thought you was gonna click out before we go out. Um, like he said, uh, October the 12th, we're gonna have other council members on and we are encouraging people to come, we want a live audience. We encouraging people to come out to ask questions, to, to learn things that you don't know, cause we learn a lot just having people on our podcast. And if y'all wanna come out too, yeah, on October the 12th, you know, to, cause the more people see your face, the more they, you know, they remember and understand you. So we were like, if you can, if you have time in your schedule to come back out with us, October 12th, we'll be, we'll be at our clubhouse.
Yeah, we do listen to clubhouse.
We gonna do it from the clubhouse, we got more people coming, um, we don't always invite everybody to there. People like, y'all genuine people. But, um, to come back out, so, um, and we, we wanna live audience, if y'all wanna come out and sit and ask questions. Like we need to learn these things, we need to get out there. We say we want change, we wanna do nothing about the change. We just constantly just spit it off our tongue and don't do nothing about it. So if you want change, you wanna learn, cause you know, we all have room for improvement room, to learn new different things at our age. Cause I'm, I'm, I love to learn things, I love, I, I always wanna learn. So we're learning, come out with us and learn about, well, who should, we should vote for to be on these city council and these members on these seats.
Yep, 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 so once again, we wanna say thank you so much for tuning in to this week's episode of, um, Product of the City. If you didn't catch it here, catch it on YouTube, we love you, peace, we're out.